Good evening, this is the Selectmen's Meeting, Town of Goffstown, December 17th. First item on our agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
We have two sets of minutes to review this evening and accept. So we'll start two weeks back, December 3rd. The copies were in your previous week's read ahead material.
Make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of December 3rd, both public and non-public.
Would anybody like to discuss corrections? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we'll take up the minutes from last week, 10th of December.
Motion to approve.
Anybody like to discuss changes?
I abstained, I wasn't here.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Three zero two.
Okay. Three zero two, motion passes. Announcements, we have no announcements predetermined, what about the rest of the board? Moving right along then.
I have one here.
Yes, Scott?
I know we don't often do this, but do you think that we can do like a moment of silence for the events that happen on Friday?
Certainly we can. So, Board will have a moment of silence for the events that unfolded over the last weekend Our, we could move ahead into our public comment if anybody is not on the agenda and wishes to address the board. I know a couple of you are here for the agenda items, but so no one from the public for public comment, thank you. Mr. Baines, are you expecting anybody else, because I can move right ahead and take up your issue?
No, they showed that that's good, it's not.
Well, please, please find yourself a seat here at the table so the microphone can pick up your discussion. You're President of Crispin's House, and you're here this evening to talk about a proposed warrant article.
That I am. You might recall that last year, we put a warrant article in for $62,500, subsequently amended to $62,501, so that it could be revoted on, and graciously, the Selectmen voted to approve the article, Budget Committee subsequently did not, and when it came time for the warrant article to be voted on, it failed by approximately 400 votes, I think. We're here this year with a different position relative to the warrant article. Over the past year, as we struggled through to try to keep our programs operating in an efficient manner, we've been able to accumulate some funding through some minor grants in our fundraising activities, and that has allowed us to hire an executive director, her name is Kristy Curtis, sitting right here behind me. Kristy is a Goffstown resident, very well versed in the operation of nonprofits such as ours, and we're so pleased to be able to have her onboard and to administer our programs. However, Kristy remains in a rather tenuous position, going from month to month to month with our ability to raise funds to pay her salary. People don't work for free, and we don't expect Kristy to work for free, so we do have to pay her a salary. Most of our budget is for her salary and benefits. So this year, she has aggressively sought grant applications, and which are out there. I think if you look at the funding sheet that we provided you, you'll see that we have-
The one with the letterhead on it?
Yes, the one with the letterhead on it. You'll see that we've, we have typically funds secured of $16,200. We have some grants that we've been able to get at $4,050. We have other submitted grants of $31,500. However, us getting anywhere close to that in any amount is slim to none. We'll be fortunate if we get two or three of those. But you have to go out and spread it out and make all kinds of applications to see if you can bring in funds to keep your programs going. We are a, and let me finish up, on the bottom, there's another potential for $69,000 in grant applications next year. Again, that's just as an ongoing effort to keep her paid. So she has a lot of, Kristy has a lot of incentive to go out and try to find grants, so. But we are a nonprofit, we have been in Goffstown for almost 24 years, we will have been in 24 years, I believe, next month, in the month of January. Over the years, the program has evolved into what it is today, which is basically a prevention program. There are no other programs in our community, such as Crispin's House, to provide prevention programs, and I call them prevention programs for helping kids make positive choices. We provide various programs, we don't actually provide drug and alcohol services, so to speak, with the exception of maybe one program, in that we provide programs that kids can get involved in, and in positive ways, and it, and by doing, us putting these programs together, we can pull these kids into something that's going to keep them active and out of trouble. That's the basic goal, and not getting involved in the drug and alcohol scene. So we have our volunteers program at the high school, which is on the rise, we have about 40 or 50 members of that program now. We're looking at probably doubling that next year at the high school, and we are in the process of instituting that same program at Mountain View Middle School. We have a meeting to get that started on January 8th. Those programs provide opportunities for the kids at the high school and will at the middle school to make themselves available to service organizations and other nonprofit organizations here in the community. We facilitate them being able to get out into the community and help these other organizations. We are kind of the broker for those kids to get out, and that's proven to be very, very helpful in many, many activities that have gone in town. The Food Pantry, for example, Main Street, the Main Street programs, both Old Tom Day and the Regatta, they've helped out with the Rotary Club. So there's been many, many, many organizations that they've been able to help. We don't send them out into private homes, or, you know, if Mrs. Smith needs her leaves raked, we don't provide volunteers for that. They're in a, the kids are kept in a supervised and safe activity. Beyond the volunteers program, we also sponsor a monthly youth forum at the high school, which is a wonderful program where we can sit at the table, adults and kids alike, and talk about the things that are important to the kids, the things that are bothering the kids, the things that the kids need to, or see that need attention. I'm just going to throw one out at you, which happened at our meeting on Friday. We are, we are, Crispin, the youth forum came about because of five suicides that we had in our community about 19 years ago. That was the inception of that program. At our table on Friday afternoon, we had a young girl sitting with us who has a friend that goes to West High School, and we were talking about, unknowing about what happened down in Connecticut, we were talking about different things, and suicide came up, and she said, you know, I have a friend that goes to West High School in Manchester, she's being bullied terribly. We, that's how it came about. We, the kids at the high school are putting an anti-bullying video together, which is going to be fabulous when it all, when it all happens. However, she, she said, I have this friend who's being bullied at high school, and nobody's helping her, and she's thinking about committing suicide. And Mr. Webb jumped right in there, and he says, let's you and I get together after this meeting so we can take care of that. So it's an opportunity, those kinds of things don't present themselves very often, but this one did. And, but it's those kinds of things that we can sit at the table and hear these kids talk about, and try to make them feel comfortable talking to adults and telling us about what's going on in their school and in their community, and the things that they feel that we need to deal with, and we can, we can get on those things right away. Beyond the youth forum, we have a juvenile diversion program that we run in conjunction with the area police departments and the courts, where we provide services to the kids and families who get in trouble with the police for the first time, and it keeps them out of the court systems. Most of the kids come to us directly, sometimes they do go to court, and they, and Judge Lawrence or the new justice that's over there right now, whose name escapes me, send the kids over to us as well, and we provide that service to them. Where the kids come in, we evaluate what's going on with the kids, we take a look at their family dynamics, we look at other things beyond what the child has been charged with, and many, many times, we find out there's all kinds of other circumstances that the kids are involved in, and we can look at all of them as we deal with them.
Besides the judge, the town prosecutor also has a helping role in bringing students into your, under your umbrella, too.
Yes, he does. Yes, he does.
I remember from last deliberative session, he made a very passionate plea on your behalf.
Yes, he did. Yes, he did. The Goffstown Police Department is very, very supportive of what we do as an organization, and in particular, the juvenile diversion program that we run for them. We also operate a youth attendant program with the Goffstown Police Department, which provides a service to them where if they bring children into custody, not under arrest, but they have to take somebody into custody, they have a DUI stop where there's children in a car, or they have to remove children from a home, they have a place at the police station where they can, where they can bring these children down in the back, it's called the soft room, it's way down in the back on the right in the police station. The kids can come in there and feel safe and secure without a police officer in uniform guarding over them. We have volunteers that come in and take care of that, take care of that program for We do, we do provide some support for the after-school program at the middle school. As you might recall, we used to run the after-school program at the middle school until we lost all our funding, and we were no longer able to continue that. We collaborated with the YMCA, and they are now running that program over there, and when necessary, we're, we want to be able to provide financial assistance to any family that needs financial assistance beyond what the YMCA can provide to those families. Right now, they have 14 kids in that program over there. It's still growing and developing, so they're certainly looking to grow it as much as we had it, we had about 40 families in it when we were running it, so. So those are the kind of the core programs that we are running. We have, over the years, basically lost all of our state and county funding. We get no money from them at this point in time. I will tell you, we're about to receive, I think, a $5,000 grant from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, which is going to help us continue some of our, some of our programs. But beyond that, there is nothing coming. We are out in the, out in the field doing grant applications with all the other nonprofits that are out there in the state. So the funds are scarce, there's a lot of competition for them, so, but we're working hard to do as much as we can, and by coming to the town, looking for the money that we're looking for, which is, let's say, $20,000, this will kind of give us a little bit of a cushion, to be able to tell Kristy she has a job more than beyond next month, and help us to fill in where we need to. We, we need to be able to continue to run our programs with an administrator. In the past, we have been without an administrator for many, many months at a time. I personally have run this, run Crispin's House myself as an acting executive director over many, many months. I will tell you, it doesn't run as well as it would with somebody like Kristy being in there. I'm a volunteer, our board is all volunteers. They are a wonderful board of directors that we have, and they're very, very dedicated. However, in order for us to run effective programs, we must have an administrator, and that's what this funding is all about.
Thank you, Al. And part of the package you presented to us this evening is a budget that would run from last month for the following year. You've indicated expenses totaling a little over $70,000, and then projected revenue of that amount.
Some of that revenue is wishing revenue.
Yes, as most nonprofits know about. The second item on that projected income down at Goffstown, that would probably be the heart of your article on the warrant?
It would be. That would be our proposed amount. We, as I said, we scaled back the amount that we're looking for. Last year, we were kind of behind the eight ball when we put our warrant article in, and you guys got it late, and I know initially, you didn't hear from us like this, and you didn't approve the article initially. However, when we got to the deliberative session and talked to you about what we really do as an organization and how we serve this community, taking care of the kids in our community, you guys came around and said, yeah, let's fund this. So that's why we're in here early this year. We wanted to come in and talk to you, and potentially even ask you if you would be willing to sponsor a warrant article for Crispin's House, similar to what we do for Main Street. As I said earlier, there are no other organizations in our community that do what Crispin's House does. We are the only one, we are the only one, and we've been around a long time, and we are dedicated to this community, we are dedicated to the kids in our community, and we want to continue to be able to provide those services that we do.
So, thank you, Al. Any comments or questions from the board members?
Thank you. You mentioned that you had a couple of sources of funding from the state that you no longer get.
That's correct.
Are you familiar with those? Could you expand, explain a little bit about that, the program, how the money you, how the money was channeled through to you, and why or how it is that it's no longer available?
The money came to us through two sources. One was the Hillsborough County Incentive Fund, and the other one was the Governor's Commission on Drug and Alcohol Prevention. Those were, those monies were sent to us with grants that we applied for, they were not just handed out to us. We had to write grants and justify the monies that we were receiving, and they were basically, they were funding juvenile diversion and the after-school program. And over time, I mean, initially, initially, the after-school program was funded with, the name of the agency escapes me, and they're out of business now, they've been out of money, but we had an initial funding of $60,000 as a startup fund for the after-school program. And then the Governor's Commission and the Hillsborough County Incentive Fund came in as a follow-up to that and kept us funded, and we were able to bring kids into that program, and it was highly subsidized, so we could, we could make the after-school care very, very affordable. And typically, the kids that get into that program, the families really, really need it. So we were making, we were making it available at $70 a month per child, and just to give you a comparison, the YMCA charges $50 a week per child right now, so. But over time, those funds got decreased, and decreased, and decreased, and the last, and we were getting, I want to say about $30,000 each from, from the Hillsborough County Incentive Fund and from the Governor's Commission. Over time, that got decreased until the last funds that we received, which were, two years ago, we received $11,900 from the Hillsborough County Incentive Fund. That was all we got.
But Phil, I believe your point for having Al discuss the state sourcing is so, people watching our session here this evening will know that there's been a past practice for statewide funding for these activities, and that has dried up.
Well, that's correct. I guess when, you know, people hear about this that aren't familiar with it, obviously you're a nonprofit, and just the understanding that some of your, or quite a bit of your funding was available through state and county.
That's correct.
And that's kind of, that's dried up, so it's not that, it's not that you are, got sources from private donors, it's that you did have government money, you did have money other sources than the town, you do serve Goffstown students primarily, that's how you were created, and-
That's correct.
It's just that those monies have dried up, and that you are here to try to continue, and that it is a definite impact and on Goffstown. So Goffstown does benefit from your existence.
No question.
Is what I, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get that understanding of your different, we get a lot of requests for nonprofits, and some of them we've put on in the past, they failed, and we haven't put them back on, and I'm just trying to see how you are different from the majority of the nonprofits that come.
But we, what, basically, we're different in that we're providing prevention services to this community, for our kids, to try to keep them safe and away from drugs and alcohol. There is no, almost no prevention money being doled out by the, by the state or the county anymore. What money is there is very little, and we're getting almost none of it, and as are most of the other nonprofits in the state.
If I can, thank you. On the second page of what you, has Crispin's House, the one that has demographics-
Yes.
On that, in the second paragraph, you mentioned that funding from the town of Goffstown would only, would be used only to support Goffstown High School and Mountain View Middle School students who are Goffstown residents, where we use other funds to support the, of the surrounding towns we serve. Could you expand on that? How would you separate?
Well, we can, we can track the kids that we serve, we know them by name, and so we can segregate out the kids. We typically haven't done that in the past, but we are going to do that regardless of whether we get funding or not. We are going to start tracking them demographically to determine where they're coming from, who are the kids that we're serving, and directly. I mean, this, the numbers that you see on this paper are the numbers that we're, that we're serving at the high school and the numbers that we're serving at the, at the middle school. And we try to reach all of those kids, however, we don't typically get all of those kids in our, in our programs. However, we do, we do garner a lot of kids, and we are, it is our intent to track the children that we are serving and that are directly participating in our programs.
Thank you, and I just, no-
Scott, Scott, okay.
I just, following up on what he said, I mentioned them, the total of Goffstown students in the Goffstown High School is 784, from what you presented to us, and Mountain View Middle School is 680 Goffstown students, so that's-
That's correct.
That's, that's quite a few.
That's significant. That is significant.
Scott, you got a comment?
Yeah, I was just jotting down some notes, you know, just a couple of comments. I know three of these guys, and if I had to put a, you know, top 10 or top 20 Gofftown people, they'd be there. I mean, they're just really good people, they care about the community, they care about the youth of our community. I've been involved with John Webb at the high school, another phenomenal person, and then I think about warrant articles, and I say to myself, I hate warrant articles, because we always have this discussion year after year, how much do we want to put on the ballot, and money things, et cetera, and then I hear this, and knowing what I know, this $20,000 is short money for the type of work that this organization does, not just for the Goffstown community, but for our school system as well. Has there been any consideration, have you talked to the Goffstown School Board about this being a budget item, not just for the town of Goffstown, because we have a definite vested interest in diversion, which is part of our budget, but also some of the other things, drug prevention, things of that nature, before they get to diversion?
Yeah.
And then on the high school side, and in the middle school side, those are, when you talk about volunteers and youth forum, they kind of cross between educational and town endeavors, but personally, I would rather see this in our budget, I will support it going in our budget, whether it be 10,000 or 20,000, I'll fight that fight with the Budget Committee if need be, and I'd love to have that discussion, but knowing these individuals, knowing what they've done for decades, this is short change for, I mean, and knowing what, and talking to people like our town prosecutor, knowing how much money it costs when they get into the system, any type of prevention is just a sound investment, so I look at this as a budget item, I really do. It's not an article that has to suffer this, you know, the torment-
So if it were a line in our budget, would it be in the police department, in some outreach program or in the police department?
I guess I could talk to the chief, but I was thinking of where nonprofits in the past have gone, and we haven't done any in a long, long time, but it went into other general government, and we created a line. One VNA used to be there, that's where it appeared in the budget.
Right, but if I can, before it went into the budget, it was also on the warrant. Okay, and I think properly to do this, Scott, I understand, and I feel your passion for this, but I don't think it's appropriate to take something like this and put it into the budget. If you want to do that, I think the proper way to do it is to put it on the warrant. If you want to do that, I think the proper way to do it is to put it on the warrant. And you can put in the warrant, just like we've done on Main Street. Main Street, where we've said that we were gonna, we weren't gonna put it in a budget, we go forward with it. Put it, the proper way to do this is have the article, and then say that in future years, this would be in the budget. And then put it in the budget. Because I think that's the proper way to do this. Because where you're coming from is you're taking taxpayer dollars, and you're gonna give it to a nonprofit. And if you're gonna do that, the proper way to do it is through a warrant article.
Follow-up, Scott?
No, I, I don't, I don't agree with you, but it's okay.
Any other board members?
Well, just, if I may, just so folks who are watching will know, whether this is a special warrant article or a part of a budget, what's the tax implication? I know it's going to be miniscule, so it's kind of a rhetorical question.
Twenty, twenty thousand dollars.
1.3 cents.
So, the folks watching know.
Is a little between one and two cents, which perhaps is four dollars.
About one, it's about a dollar, it's about a penny, 1.5 cents.
Yep, 1.5 cents on the tax rate, which on the average house in this town is four to five dollars in their annual bill, so.
Just so the folks know.
You're here, speaking with Al?
Yeah.
And just identify yourself, sure.
My name's Peter Romaine. I've lived in Goffstown for 35 years. And I've always been impressed with Crispin's House from its beginning, and didn't really know what they did. I had heard, you know, initially, it began. About three years ago, I started into retirement, and I wanted to work with the after-school program. And I thought Crispin's House was a good way to do that. With my luck, when I came on the board, all the funding dried up. The after-school program, which was my interest, has expanded and, and developed in different ways. I'm also a clinical mental health counselor, there 35 years also, since I've lived here. And I've also, I was on this school crisis intervention team for suicide assessments. And the school does a good job with that. Crispin's House adds to that, and is part of the substance, I think, of the community. The other thing that isn't mentioned, that with, we can get by without a director. The catch-22 is that when you want to apply for a grant, you have to have a director. Throw out the money, we can't, we can't even apply. So, we, as the board, through fundraisers, and a lot of them, and Al's done a wonderful job over the years, the fundraisers and the community's been supportive, and the board, which is 100% donates to the, the budget also. But we need some help to, to have some security to Christie's position. What she's done this year on part-time, you know, hourly rate money, what we paid her for, she does more than a full-time job, okay? The other part that I think is important that I learned was, I don't know who it is that gives us some money from the county. And she said, you know, she's given us a little money.
Well, we used to get money through the Hillsborough County Incentive Fund. Carol Holden was the, was a big sponsor of that over the years.
But we've just recently understood that other communities would like to have a Crispin's House-type activity in their community.
A youth forum.
A youth forum. They want Christie to actually teach them how to do that. So, I feel good about that. I feel good about Crispin's House. I know that money's tight, and that warrant articles, it could be that one penny. It's just no to some people. We understand that. But we thought we'd come to you and see if we could, could. I see bigger and better things for us. I see this really growing.
Thank, thank you, Peter.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, please stay there.
No, no, okay.
Well, we can take this up later this evening when we review budgetary matters, or we, the board would like that. We can discuss whether we would like to go forward with a sponsored article by the board, or request the applicant to petition an article.
Our intent is if you, if you don't agree to sponsor an article, we are going to proceed with an actual warrant article ourselves.
We would still have an opportunity to, to fully endorse it, or whatever the case may be.
Yes, you would.
Any closing comment by board members? Peter and Al, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
And thank you for everything you do.
It's approaching 6:40, and on our agenda, Donna Riker. Yes? Why don't you open up the dialogue?
Donna, does your husband want to come up at all, or? You're more than welcome to, if you'd like.
Not yet.
Scott, would you present what the situation is?
Sure. Donna, thanks for coming. I met with Donna and her husband, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Charlie.
Charlie, Charlie, on Saturday afternoon to kind of review some of the concerns that they had regarding a property that they have on 32 Main Street. And I, I advised Donna that with respect to fire department codes and regulations, when there is a decision that's rendered by the building, by the fire inspector or the fire chief that has to do with fire codes, this board does not have any jurisdiction by law. That, that, if there was any appeal process, that would have to go to the state fire marshal's office. So, but there were some issues that Donna had, and I, and I said to Donna, why don't you come in and let the whole board know, you know, what those are with respect to some improvements, I'd say some modifications to the ceiling? Just, she has some concerns about why is this being asked for now? Why wasn't it asked for prior? Also, some issues with respect to other properties in Goffstown. Why me? That, that, that type of thing, which I think certainly, you know, Donna should be able to articulate what, what the specifics to that, so that the entire board heard it, not just me, so.
The floor is yours. Thank you for setting it up, Scott. Donna?
Hi. Well, back in July, well, before that, about seven months before that, my tenant of 25 years left. And he had two units, used them as one. His business was selling materials, blinds, making draperies, doing upholstery. So, I got someone to take one unit, and I've got the middle unit vacant.
These are commercial?
Yes.
Spaces?
Yes.
Where are we? Can you just give a little?
32 Main Street, right near the river.
To the right of the.
Yep.
Okay, and so, in July, I had a prospective tenant come in. She wanted a party favors store and also after-school program. She went to the town hall, planning board, because I told her you had to go get approved. And they kept delaying. She made several phone calls, went there many times, and it was that someone had to come inspect the place. I said, fine, just let me know. Finally, I started making calls. The end of September, we finally got a visit by the fire marshal. And because there were kids involved, he walked through, and there were many items that would have to be changed. She didn't want to help pay for any of these modifications, and I didn't want to make them.
The prospective tenant?
Correct. So, I told her no. So, then I got another prospective tenant who was going to be selling used furniture. So, it's going to be another retail. I went with him this time, so there wouldn't be a delay. And the town said, well, you have to still check with the fire marshal. And he's saying that I have to redo, I have to do my ceiling for a two-hour fire code. And I said, well, there's no change in use. Why do I have to do this? And I had asked for proof. No one gave me. I had to go to some meeting of this committee the town has got. And they bounced it, the responsibility back to the fire marshal. My handyman, we had to look in the ceiling and give the codes for the drop ceiling that's there, and describe what's the ceiling above that. And I emailed the information to the fire marshal. And he says, you know, you got to put a two hour. It's like, what have I got now? Do I have to add an hour? None of that information was forthcoming, just do it. And they gave me a couple of examples of what I could do to bring it up to the two hours. So, at this point, my heels dug in, because no one was telling me why I have to do this if it's not a change of use. Because all the builders, contractors that I've talked to said, you shouldn't have to. It's not a new building. There was no structural changes. And if there's no occupancy type change, you shouldn't be going through this. So, I sent an email to the town administrator and all the select people. When was that?
October.
October, yes. And I didn't get a response. Meanwhile, the place is not rented, so there's no income. So, my business of renting has been hurt through this long process. On December 3rd, I called to be put on the selectmen's agenda, because I've been told to pursue this. And I gave all the information, and she took my name and number and said if there were any questions, that would get back to me. Well, on the 10th, I got a call from the town administrator saying that it was too late to be put on the agenda. I said, well, I called last week.
You're, you're, you're here now.
Yeah. And I met with Scott on Saturday, and he gave me a bunch of papers that have the codes and to, that came from the town to back them up. But in there also is a lot of stuff to back me up. So, what I want to mention is change of use or occupancy classification. According to this, if there's no change, I don't have to do anything. And there's a list of what the classifications are. One is business, one is mercantile. Basically, my previous tenant fell under both. So, I would think whether it's just an office or if it's retail, I should be allowed to do it without doing any changes.
Excuse me, Donna. Scott, did you do any research along that line in preparation for your meeting on Saturday?
No, I didn't. I mean, I, I did, I did read through the statutes that were provided to me. I also, I did give, if you saw the NFPA information, it's quite extensive. That being said, I did reach out to the chief today to, to talk with him about this particular issue. My, my sentiment is, is that I am not an expert when it comes to NFPA regulations or standards. That's why we have our, our building, our fire inspector and our fire chief. And ultimately, I mean, the way I, from what I've read in the RSA is the, the fire department has the authority to inspect any of these buildings at any time, if they so choose, to see if they're, if it meets fire safety code for the occupants of, of the, of the building. And they have pretty broad jurisdiction with respect to life, life safety. In that respect, I did not see through the statutes that we had any jurisdiction whatsoever to overturn a decision at the local level. The only jurisdiction that we have, I believe, is with issues of customer service, process, things of that nature, timeliness. In terms of the administrative decision of the inspector or of the chief, that would be appealed to the state fire marshal's office, who would have that, that authority. We don't. And that's why I didn't really go into a ton of details. I did give Donna the information, because I think, you know, everyone should be informed. These are, these are the things that we're looking at. You can look at them as well. But I am not a fire services professional. That's why we, we, we pay one, and that's why we have a state fire marshal to be the arbiter if there are some, some disagreements. And I kind of left it at that.
Do you have any rebuttal to that situation?
Well, initially, it was when children were involved, so there was like a change of use. If there's no change of use, there shouldn't be anything involved. It should have just been granted, and they should have opened up, and everything would be fine.
So, so is it fair to say the fire department saw a change in use, and you don't see a change in use? Is that where the?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, I mean, we have our, I think our chief is in the back, I need to feel, that's fair. But I, in my reading of the, the RSA is, I personally did not see the trigger, shall we say, being a change of use. I believe that the fire chief or the inspector have the ability to go into any commercial property, one that has his retail or someone is, has an apartment, things of that nature, to inspect it for life safety purposes, regardless of whether there's a change of use. They can go in tomorrow to any one of these properties and say, and look around and say, ooh, that doesn't look good. And either cite the individual or ask for them to make corrective actions to protect the life and safety of the occupants. So, that's just my, and again, I told Donna, I'm not an attorney either. I don't. But I, I read through the RSA's, and ultimately, I believe all of this does lie with, with the fire chief. And I don't know, Donna, have you spoken with the fire chief at all about this? I mean, to me, I think that would be the next step, would be to sit down with Chief O'Brien. You have all those materials that I gave you. Certainly, he knows about them. He's the one who probably highlighted or circled some of the things, and to have that dialogue, you know, with him. And if there's still areas of disagreement, then, in my opinion, the recourse is to then contact the state, because there is an appeal process. This is not the first time that it, that's happened in the state. That's why they're there. And then they'll make a ruling on it.
Any other board member want to follow up?
I agree with Scott 100%. Let's follow the process.
Well, we, I mean, we cannot get involved in this.
No, no, exactly. We, yeah, we stay right out of this mess. We stay right out of this mess.
I, I appreciate your situation where you believe that about a change of use, but there's the idea that safety inspection probably could occur anytime. And so, you're, you're, as a, a business owner, you're facing a business decision about, should you renovate yourself? Or is there an opportunity for you to get a waiver for that condition and not renovate? That's, that's, appears to be a business decision for you, and if you wish to exercise an appeal route, that's another business decision.
Is every other business on Main Street going to be inspected also?
I'm, I'm not going to have that discussion. We're, we're here to hear your case.
The chief was at the meeting that I had to go to with that committee, the new committee you have for new businesses. So, he is aware of this.
I, I think, I urge you to follow up on what Selectman Gross offered is, at your earliest convenience, meet the fire chief and ask what is the actual conditions that you have to meet, and what his decision is. And what his decision is along those lines? And that allows you then to make a business decision. Do you appeal it? Or do you want to renovate yourself or find a tenant that's willing to bring it up to code too?
So even though this was triggered by them thinking it was a change of use, and if it's not a change of use, why is this even at this point?
When, I, I, I know for one situation myself, if a fire inspector sees something on the inside of a building, for whatever reason, he's invited inside, if he sees something of a safety hazard, it's his obligation to have it corrected.
If I can follow on that, I was going to make the similar comment. It's, it's not the change in use. It's anytime that someone observes conditions that don't comply with life safety codes, then it's incumbent upon the property owner to correct those. It could be a tenant that brings the, the issue forward. It could be a bypasser who brings the issue forward. But it has to be addressed to protect the occupants of the building. That's why we have the life safety codes. And it's not within the purview of this board to deal with those.
Yeah, I, I just think the most beneficial thing at this point is for the chief, you and the chief to get together to, to talk about what are the current conditions? He, he talked to you, I think, about the two-hour fire rating. What is it now? You mentioned earlier, is it, do I have one hour now? What do I have to do to get, to get to two? What are some of the options? Ultimately, you know, from what I know, the little that I know, things like sprinklering are options, drywall is an option, fire rating panels are options. So those are three that I just, I know of. I don't know if there are others, you know, that, that are out there. Each of them comes with a different certain cost, cost factor. But it is not, I mean, when we, when we talk about other buildings, I can tell you, as I mentioned the other day, the restaurant, that, that was a, a building where they underwent a lot of renovations to meet, meet the code. I know across the street where, from near the bridge, they also redid some things. I believe they put drywall for that. And then obviously, when you have, you know, apartments up above, it does, it does trigger more of those life health, life and safety concerns of the occupants. So I know, I know chief will spend the time with you to, you know, to, to do that and explain every, all the options that you have available. But I don't want you leaving here thinking that you were unfairly disselected for this. It's just not, that's not the case. I think, you know, it's incumbent upon anybody doing their job to make sure that the environment is safe and to, and to work with you, the owner, to give you options on how to achieve that. So, and I think, you know, meeting with the chief, I think you'll be able to resolve that. I really do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Sue, would you like to run down the administrator's report?
Yes. Your meeting schedule for the next two weeks is in here. However, we may have another meeting to add here on December 28th for two purposes. One would be for the ten wheeler. The bids will be, are due in the day before. So Carl should have a recommendation for you on the 28th. And the second purpose for the 28th meeting, if you so choose, the police chief was able to get a grant. But you have to commit to it before year end and it's over 5,000. So we have to hold a public hearing. So I'd have to notice that public hearing. So if you, there is no match by the town, it's, actually, we'd be receiving three programmed portable radios. But we still have to, under RSA, have a public hearing. We have to commit to it before year end. So those would be the two purposes of that special meeting. If you choose, the 28th is a Friday. I don't know the board's availability to have it during the day or?
Scott already indicated he'll, he'll call in.
Correct.
But I'm, I'm willing to hold the meeting.
Do you want to have it during the day? Is everyone available during the day or like first thing in the morning or right after work?
The 28th is a Friday, did you say?
Yes, it is.
What's the, what's the timeframe for the bids? When do they do?
They're due on the 27th.
So he'll open the bids, make us, make a recommendation.
What time of day would you be considering?
Either first thing in the morning or right after work. I don't know.
Let's, let's try to have one or the other rather than an evening meeting on Friday.
Well, I don't understand one or the other instead of an evening meeting. I don't understand what?
Would you like it first thing in the morning?
Or immediately after work.
Or immediately after work.
Or five o'clock in the afternoon.
Eight AM, five PM, how's that?
Okay, to me, five o'clock's still the evening, but that's okay. Five o'clock's fine.
Five o'clock?
Yeah.
Five o'clock on?
Five PM, we will so notice it that way.
Notice the public hearing for the grant acceptance.
Thank you.
Just looking at the meetings, we have two meetings scheduled for the 2nd of January. The EDC committee meeting will be without a board of selectmen representative because we'll have our own meeting going on that night. Just, just an FYI, that's all. Just so you can pass it on, so.
Yeah, I will let them know.
That's a, an outcome of our decision to move the EDC to a different evening. I mean, move the, our meeting to a Wednesday.
Yeah, because of the holidays that we're, we're faced with.
Okay, your consensus folder tonight includes manifests, accounts payable, $846,962.41 and your payroll withholding manifest of $136,457.20. You also have a dispersment voucher to the trustees of the trust fund seeking the $25,000 reimbursement from the Mildred Stark Trust Fund for the HVAC unit replacement at Town Hall. And you have employment status reports on your actions last week of hiring the videographers.
Motion to accept the consensus folder.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you. The assessor has recommendations for you tonight. Veterans tax credits, MAP 9, lot 60-12. And intent to cut a MAP 18, lot 62-1.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero again.
Thank you. We were hopeful to have the capable franchise renewal to you to this evening. However, Comcast Legal is reviewing it and had a couple of issues. So rather than have you adopt that tonight, we have an extension till January 31st. That's in your signature folder.
So we hear the motion on that?
Yes, to sign the extension.
The extension is in the?
Yes.
I had mistakenly took off the sign here tabs because I thought that was the accurate.
No, we had already taken out the original contracts.
Is this a new extent or an extension of the extension?
It's a new extension until January 31st.
Okay, motion to approve the extension to January 31st of the capable franchise. I'll second it.
Do you know the nature of Comcast wanting to review it all again?
Yes, so we have a few items. I don't have them with me right now, but there was some more detail they wanted in there. Want to expand on? So we, once they get their language together, we would like to resubmit it to our attorney Epstein to review those changes.
So we have a motion to make a, an extension till the 31st of January. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
At tab 6F in your packets, you have the bid specifications for the annual report. Assistant Town Administrator recommends that we cut the number of printed reports from 1,500 to 1,000 as we have over 500 remaining from last year. It appears that people must be using our online version. Motion is needed to approve the annual report bids specs.
Oh, I'll make a motion for?
I'll second it. I got questions too.
Phil first.
The year prior, the last year, did we have less than 1,500? We did, didn't we?
Yeah, we had 2,000. We've been cutting it down 500 a year.
I thought we bumped it up.
I thought we bumped it up because of the?
250. That's what I thought too. That's what I thought. I thought we bumped it up.
I remember we had cut down and then we had the DVDs. The DVDs weren't, didn't go as well.
You don't need a DVD, but you should put it in. Yeah, it's online.
No, 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 no.
We had CD one.
Going through what we did, that's all. I wasn't saying to have DVDs. But that's what my recollection was, that we bumped it up 250.
We may have, we may have.
But that was for a one-time occurrence. I thought it hit the best seller list and it didn't.
What do they cost us per, per each one?
Oh.
Five bucks a pop?
No, I don't think so. Well, maybe, if there were 70, well, we had the mail. I'd have to check and get back to you on that because we used to put the mailing in that line, but the, for the voters checklist in with the, because that's printing of the annual report and voter checklist. And the mailing was like a thousand dollars of that expense. So I would need to back that out to get to your cost.
And we're going to get the price for 250 less or more? That comes in the bid. That's what it says there in the bottom.
Yes, yeah.
The reason why I'm saying that is I really think we need to wean off the paper.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it, there's really no need. You, you can bring up anything that you want. Any of these town reports are online for the last like six years.
But not everyone has access.
And I, I completely understand that. But that's why I'm saying wean it, wean, we need to wean off of it. So maybe we go to 750 this year, you know?
Well, we have about 550 left. And printers work in increments of 500.
No, and that, and that, and that I understood, you know? But I'm saying maybe we go a little bit less.
I, I agree that we should cut back. In the worst case scenario, there's more demand than we have printed copies for. And in that case, we would, what, ask for another run of 500 or whatever? That's not the end of the world.
Well, it depends if they keep the plates.
Ask them to keep it.
I understand, but if people demand printed copies, we need to make it available to them.
Yes, you do.
And it's not the worst thing in the world to have to go and ask for another run.
But we, it's cheaper, it's always cheaper just to?
I understand, absolutely. So we kind of have to gain.
Well, I, I figured if we gave away about 1,000 this year, 1,000 for next year.
I think it makes very much sense.
They're still, they still use plates, really?
I, I'm, I'm under, I'm under the impression that everything is like a PDF and they're just hitting a button now with the technology. And that publishing on demand now, I mean, it's just, I don't think it's that much more expensive to go that route. I just assume, let's go down as, as low as we possibly think we can go and, and do another run.
I would go less than 1,000. I would not.
I don't want to have to be turning people away without a copy.
I'll tell you right now, I can think of at least probably 1,000 out of the, all the people who vote, there's got to be close to 1,000 people who don't have internet.
So we had 1,500 last year.
Recommending 1,000 this year.
We have 500 left over, so the basic math says 1,000. And this would be, we'll invite Scott in a year from now and hear his recommendation to go down to 500.
But we'll track how many. Artakers.
Like I said, it, you know, 10 years ago, that was the only way you were ever going to get it, you know? That was it. Now with technology, and I understand a lot of people don't have it, but the library, they can go to the library. There's other ways of getting it.
And we may not, we may not know the answer to that until we go cold turkey or near, near to it. And, and at some point, it'll be a decision to print 500. And then we'll find out.
Or charge them five bucks per copy.
Or?
Permission to give all our additional copies of Historical Society.
I'll take a few extra.
Our office isn't big enough. You can keep your 500. The, is, what about reproduction on CDs?
We did that one year.
People took some, some of them, but there's no need to do that.
We gave them a choice of the?
It's on the web. Yeah, it's on the web.
It's on the web, yeah. As long as someone has internet access, they can get to it on the web.
So I believe I heard a motion to approve the printing of 1,000 copies.
So we asked for a motion?
It was, and Scott seconded it.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
No further discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 The finance software. You have a memo at 6G that the Assistant Town Administrator itemizes the deductions for the modules which went beyond the scope of the original RFP and the discounts offered by Tyler Technologies and the corresponding changes to the annual fees. So the price came down to $276,962. Is that the number the board wants to go forward with in the warrant article?
I would say a motion that, that would be the amount on?
So moved.
Warrant article. Motion by Scott, seconded by Phil. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 And good job for our negotiators.
Yes, he did an excellent job in that.
I'm sure some part of that $60,000 negotiation was easy, but others, they had to fight hard for it.
Yes, and we just want to note that one of the ones taken out because it wasn't the original RFP was the citizen self-service that was 5,025. And the content manager, which would allow you to go paperless, for 13,700. So those were removed because they weren't in the original RFP. But they have that ability and anytime in the future we want to add on, we could do that.
Add more bells and whistles in the future.
The next item.
Didn't know that.
Didn't know what?
No, I didn't know that. The, I mean, the citizen one, that allows them to?
See their tax bills online or their, it, it's not for reporting potholes and all of that.
Okay. But what, what, I mean, for 5,000?
We can always get it when we need it.
I know we say that, but you know, you think someone who's going to go to the, on the warrant, they're going to say, I don't know, for 7676, I'm voting for it. But for 780, oh, 281, I'm not, I mean?
That's not the issue. The issue was collecting the money also.
Well, I just?
Different issue.
If I, if I may, what is part of that citizen piece? It's, it's viewing your tax bill online.
Sewer bill.
Your sewer bill, okay. Anything else?
Motor vehicles wouldn't be in that because that's a separate software piece.
Well, my view on this is our staff will have a lot, a lot to do in the forthcoming year, transitioning over to new software, let alone entertaining present, you know, how the information's going to be presented on internet queries, whether that's going to take passcode IDs and all that. Wonderful opportunity for an improvement in the future year.
And their self-service for HR purposes was built into the HR module, so there's no additional costs there. So employees can go in, see the vacation time, choose the benefits and all of the automated parts.
Electronic, electronic time card and electronic signature, uptime cards.
I believe so, yes.
That was one of your discussions.
Right, and expenses? Is that part of it? If they do an expense account, that's all electronic? Okay. Purchase orders, no, no more?
Oh, yeah.
They will do all that electronically?
Yes.
You can smile now, Scott.
I'll take, I'll take it.
The next item is in your tab at 6H. That's Community Planning Grant for the Pinardville Study. The Community Planning Grant Committee comprised of selectmen representatives, Collins Adams, Planning Board Representative Richard Meany, Gass Town District Corps Rep Tony Martz, and Town Planner Brian Rose and Assistant Town Administrator Derek Horn reviewed four RFQs, submitted for consideration and interviewed the four vendors. They unanimously recommended an award to Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative LLC for $50,000. That contract was very thick, so it's in your signature folder, but it's also, was emailed to you on 12/13 for review.
Would you like to make a motion, if I may, to award the Pinardville Study funded by the Community Planning Grant to Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative LLC for $50,000? I'll make a comment.
Second.
Would that motion include having the chairman sign the agreement?
Yes, absolutely.
And the second to that?
Yes, and do you want the third one too, since you're out?
I want to roll.
The third one is? The third one is?
The third one would be, um, to encumber.
That will be later this evening.
Yeah, that will be, that's on the encumbrance list.
Uh, Mr. Martz? You are one of the authors of this grant opportunity.
Uh, yeah, I'm from the, with the Goffstown Industrial Corporation. We're actually putting up a cash ma, a matching grant for that grant. And I spent the last two weeks with Derek and Brian to finalize this contract, and I'm fairly satisfied with it. My concern is, we did have, uh, a selection committee for the vendor. It included nobody from Penardville. And what I'd asked the board to do is either through a motion or through some type of encouragement, insist that at least half of the advisory committee for this grant include either residents or businesses from the Penardville area. That's absolutely critical to the success of this project.
So, to expand the current committee to include?
There is no committee right now. There was a selection committee.
Okay, it was just for a selection committee only, okay.
There was a selection committee only. There now needs to be an advisory committee that's gonna be very active if you look through the schedule on that. And my concern is, we need to make sure that at least half of that group is from Penardville, either business owners or residents.
That would be, uh, on the work list for our town planner to meet people and encourage that to happen. Mr. Martz's point is very valid.
Does it say how many, the size of the committee or minimum?
No, it doesn't.
It just says committee.
Just says committee.
But a committee could be three.
Could be three, could be, I mean, we, I've talked to Derek and, uh, Brian about a group of probably twelve, uh, so that there's representation from the planning board and the industrial corporation and St. As, but it's, it's very easy to find those people. It's much harder to find people who actually live in that community. And, and that's really where the focus needs to be.
So, will staff be bringing forward a recommendation for composition of the committee?
I'm not sure what your process is in that regard.
Okay. I will check with staff. I would assume they would be making that recommendation because that was part of the grant application and the grant requirements, I would imagine.
And I would expect it to be organized by January, early January, because the process needs to start right away.
Okay.
So, uh, what would be the lifespan of this ad hoc committee advisory group?
Would be to.
For the term of the, um.
The March twenty-fourteen town meeting. But the good thing about the way the contract has come through, it literally sets a schedule for every single meeting, uh, between the consultant and, and those folks. So, anyone signing on knows exactly, for the most part, within a week or so, what they're gonna be doing.
So, we could incorporate that into, you have your rules of procedure for appointments to ad hoc committees?
Mm-hmm.
And part of it is defining the term and the compensation and the mission of that committee, and what your expectation for deliverables are.
We recently set up an ad hoc committee for the finance selection of software. Uh, something very similar needs to be written to define the scope.
Right. Yes. Want to expand the December twenty-eighth agenda to include that? Because we can have a recommendation to you for that, and so that they go ahead and.
Tony, it has to be on a fast track?
Well, it will, it will have to be sometime in January, so I, I don't think it needs to be done this year.
So, who can agree on the? And I'm saying to ag, agree on the, um, composition on December twenty. Then they can go out and recruit members.
Because that, that should be part of the motion to get the group together and, and show prospective group members what's in front of them.
And Brian has the template that we've discussed in the past. It's just not part of the contract.
So, we had the motion, right?
Yes, you did, sorry.
A lot of discussion, excuse me. Those in favor of going forward with, with this motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, thank you for your support and the effort.
Thank you, Tony.
Um, the next one, um, aye, aye. We've already taken care of. That was the Homeland Security Grant that the, um, chief, police chief was able to acquire, and we will have a public hearing on that on December twenty-eighth. So, we don't need to do that one right now. Um, Jay?
Do we make a motion on that, or?
I believe.
I don't know. He just said it was a.
You, oh, yeah, you didn't take a motion on that. Do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, yep, that we move forward with a re, a public hearing on Friday, twelve twenty-eight at five P.M.
Oh, five, that's right.
Right?
Yep, that's right.
Um, for a Homeland Security Grant.
Five, five?
Do we wanna make it?
Five fifteen.
We have three items on that agenda now.
Yes, we do.
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen. Five fifteen?
Five fifteen.
For the public hearing, excuse me.
For the public hearing.
Those in favor of, uh, scheduling a public hearing on the twenty-eighth, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, passes.
Thank you. Enclosed at tab six J is your year-end encumbrances. And the total amount of.
We should be looking at version two of this.
Yes.
Which is the second page where the total ends, one million, zero, twenty-nine, eight hundred and eighty, forty-one cents. And that was, that was different than the first page because of the fifty thousand dollar.
Grant.
Penardville grant. That was the only difference from the first version. Selectmen want to, uh, review any of the individual items on what is to be encumbered?
Make a motion to accept the, uh, encumbrances as presented.
Yeah, I'll second that. I don't see anything of concern. So, that'll be a motion to accept the, uh, encumbrances presented to the board, uh, which total one million, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cents. Those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, at tab six K, you have the default budget calculation, and that was prepared by Finance Director Don Borr for your consideration. Action's not required tonight, um, but it will have to be voted upon before budget submission deadline of January eighth.
Scott, this was probably the, also the sum that you mentioned to the Budget Committee on Tuesday evening?
Um, the Budget Committee made decisions over the last two to three weeks with respect to our budget, and the column, that's delineated B.C.
Mm-hmm.
That reflects those adjustments.
That was the Tuesday.
It's also a request to get the default, uh, budget. And as it stands now, and again, there could be further adjustments made by the Budget Committee. Uh, our budget from the selectmen would be nineteen million, five hundred eighty thousand, five eighty-two. And the default budget would be nineteen million, two hundred fifty-two thousand, eight sixty-four.
Well, it'll be brought forward again on what date?
Um, your January second meeting.
January second meeting.
The, um, I don't know, I'll wait till we do a budget.
Next item for the administrators.
The draft annual warrant, and you have a revised one in your.
I'm sorry, can I step back? We are gonna make an adjustment then to the finance software because that.
Yes.
That will go down to the number we just voted.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why the warrant was revised. I should have revised that one, too. That came in late Fridays after packets were already done.
In our routing box next door this evening was a revision, um, where the, uh, the text that's highlighted as gray or, no, excuse me, highlighted as yellow were changes you made today?
Yes. Um, first one on Article twelve was just to make sure the language of the number equaled the number, the numerical number. And the, uh, D.R.A. did review, and they only had two required changes. That, that the language matched the numeral, and, um, that they, there'd be contingency language at the end of the article that's highlighted in yellow. So, I've resent this to D.R.A. with this contingency, because they don't give you the language. They just say, okay, you need the contingency language there. So, I did that. I've sent it back to D.R.A., and they, obviously couldn't get back to me today on that, so at our next meeting, I should have a review. But basically, it says, if Articles twelve and nineteen, that would be the operating budget and the revolving fund for cable, passed as presented, then Article twelve appropriation will be reduced by eighty-four thousand, thirty dollars, which equals seventy-five percent of the appropriation budget for cable TV. The reason being is.
These statements sort of indicate they're a positive promotion for passage of the article. Is this a, a recent change allowing us to put these contingency statements on?
No, we, we've done that before, um, but we usually just did it on one article. She requires it, um, or on both articles. So, it should, this same language will appear also on Article nineteen. And then the second one is, um, if Articles nine, twelve and twenty both pass, twenty being the revolving fund for special detail.
Corresponding statement had to be in those.
Sure, yeah. Then Article twelve appropriation will be reduced by fifty-five thousand, four eighty, which equals fifty percent of the appropriation budget for police special detail. The reason being is they need to build the fund, so it would start July first, basically, for them.
Yeah, I know, I know that we see this and we're like, oh, no big deal. But for the average voter, they start reading this stuff and they're just like, huh? I'm just.
Well, and it's incumbent upon us to explain it in the Voters' Guide.
Right.
Because we can't put any more on the warrant or official ballot than what D.R.A. allows.
And the language has to be this way.
Well, they tell you you need contingency language. So, I came up with this. I tried to simplify it. I sent it off to them. We'll see how it comes back.
But I'm not disparaging anything that you did. I'm just saying, what the D.R.A. makes us put in these warrant articles is very confusing for.
It's clear for them when they have to interpret it.
But it's not clear for the average voter, so.
I can understand anything the D.R.A. does, really. It's getting to be a con, it's getting to be a contract with lots of fine print in it.
Yeah.
I would just love to, like, put that on the warrant. As required by the Department of Revenue and Administration, the following language has been, has been.
Well, actually, the whole warrant, the whole warrant follows.
It'd be nice to put in the, in the polls, so people know that. Because, no, they think that we're the ones who write these things, you know?
Yes, I have been.
What's that sign on the bottom, so?
Yeah.
But within the requirements of the law and D.R.A.
So, you.
So, the, uh.
The change on fourteen was what?
Uh, just the reduction of the amount because we had it in at three hundred thousand.
Yes.
Um, Article sixteen, uh, we just changed to more clearly identify where this, uh, culvert and slope failure is on town land, and, and it includes repairing damage to the voters' land.
Wait, 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 where, you, you.
Article sixteen.
Oh, I'm already, I'm on thirteen, I'm sorry.
Thirteen?
Yeah.
There were no changes?
No, I know that, but this is our, our time to do that.
You gotta comment on thirteen?
Yeah, I was just going through the changes first, and then you can go back, and if you have any issues.
I didn't know if we were going in order.
Uh, finish up your changes, please, Sue.
Okay, thank you.
You're on the roll there.
All right. And then Article nineteen, um, uh, D.R.A. asked, and this just recommended, but to more clearly identify the equipment before, it didn't say cable franchise equipment grant. So, she asked to be more specific rather than any other equipment grants. Um, also, again, that contingency language has been added at the end of nineteen and at the end of twenty. That's it for my changes. Now you can have at the warrant.
Yes, can I ask a question?
Is one of Sue's changes?
Uh, well, from what is highlighted that she put in there, yeah, about twelve and.
Go ahead.
What if? Well, the ones that have the contingency, if Articles twelve and nineteen pass, or they have both, they have, you have two of them that have two, refer to two articles. If I'm reading this for the first time as a voter, and I ask the question in my mind, well, if twelve and nineteen both pass, well, what happens if only twelve passes and nineteen doesn't pass? Then what happens?
Then it doesn't reduce.
Doesn't, doesn't reduce. But they both have to pass as presented. And the reason I put as presented, if they're amended or you end up in default on one, you know, then they're not as presented and you can't expect that reduction.
Well, following their logic, do we need more explanation?
We'll see when she responds to my, uh, request for another review.
See, the strange thing here, I'm sorry.
Uh, you're saying that if we had a default on twelve.
Then I wouldn't be reducing it by eighty-four because the default for peg would only be sixty-five or whatever it was the previous year.
That was my point.
Right.
It's a third option that's not explained.
What, the default?
I gotcha. I hear what you're saying.
So, what we're saying is Article twelve and twenty must both pass as presented in order for Article twelve to be reduced by fifty-five, four eighty.
Right.
And, and I guess going to what Phil's argument was, is that you could put, if Article nineteen passes, then the Article two appropriation, um, may be reduced up to eighty-four thousand dollars, which is equal, because that is the truth, because it could be anywhere from sixty-something to eighty-something. Um, but it just makes it very confusing.
That, that was my point. You put that in there and it leaves more questions that the average person that reads and.
So, do you have suggested language that would take into account all possibilities? That would be more clear.
No, make it even worse.
Okay.
We'll wait to see what D.R.A. says.
Scott, you wanted to review other articles?
Yeah, no, just the, the, uh, Article thirteen, um, will you put note, wages have been frozen for two thousand eleven hyphen two thousand thirteen.
Twelve.
I'm sorry, I said, yeah, two thousand and twelve. Um, for some, you know, they get into that school year thing where, where they're thinking, oh, it's only one.
Should I put in?
I would just put, wages have been frozen for, for two years, for the two years of two thousand and, so this, at least, something that's just a little bit more definitive that it's been.
Twenty-four months.
For two, for the past two years.
For the past two years.
Right. And then in, and, you know, two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve for this group of town employees. This way, it's clear that.
Okay.
Because for, you know, on a, on a teacher or, you know, on, on the school side, that's just, that could just be one year.
Sure. Got it. The board agrees with that, I assume.
Now, I, I know this is, uh, I don't wanna be trite in some of these things, but to see, uh, Article fourteen, I just wanna kind of firm these things up. Sometimes it's like one or two words, kind of, um, says here, okay, uh, for the purpose of purchasing municipal finance software and conversion of data, for the purchase, uh, for the purpose of purchasing replacement, municipal finance software? Because that's what we're doing. We are replacing it.
Okay.
For the purpose of, for the purchase of replacement. Instead of putting purpose, for the replace, for the purchase of replacement.
Purpose has to be in all.
Always has to be in it, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's one word you can't take out.
Yeah.
For the purpose of purchasing replacement.
At some point, we're gonna have to explain the unreserved fund balance and what the surplus of the unreserved fund balance is to folks so they understand where this money's coming from, how the money gets into the unreserved fund, that sort of thing.
In the Voters' Guide, definitely, yeah.
Is the word surplus required?
That's interesting because all of the D.R.A. templates use the word surplus and not unreserved fund balance. But I sent it up this way, so I was incorporating their word in it, but also using unreserved fund balance.
My concern is, as long as we're prepared to address that to the voters, why do you?
My concern is as long as we're prepared to address that to the voters, why do you have the surplus? Where did the money come from and why is there extra money in there? Why aren't you better managing the money so that that doesn't happen? That's all.
What I'm hearing, it would, might be better if the word surplus was left out of it. Once it's-
Okay.
Once the money has been put into the unreserved fund balance, it's no longer surplus.
DRA calls these votes from surplus.
I know, but it, it almost gives a connotation that we're over appropriating and then we've got all these surpluses.
And we're not managing money properly. We've got extra left over, what's going on?
And, and yet, you're doing good management by getting the unreserved fund balance to the point it is.
Yeah, I would strike surplus.
Could you go back to the DRA and-
I will.
Ask them if the word surplus is absolutely necessary according to their-
I'll just take it out and ask her to review it again. And so that would apply to 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Good point.
Could I, could I just add to that, because I think part of the issue or concern is if you have that word surplus on there, you're on a default budget, then you, you might as well stay on a default budget if you have all this surplus.
Yeah, and we don't know what our surplus is issue.
And if it became surplus, it became surplus over many years.
Right, several years.
Wise expenditures. Scott?
Are we allowed to, I know in the past we've been able to this, bold, no amount to be raised from taxation?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
I think we've been allowed to do that in the past, so.
That's their actual language, too, so I'm sure they won't mind, DRA's.
So that was no amount raised from taxation?
No amount to be raised from taxation, that appears in four articles.
Additional taxation.
Could you put it bold, blue?
We don't have colored ink on the ballots, and I don't think you want to pay for it.
Well, we made good progress on this draft.
One more?
Yep.
Okay, what, pay?
I might have more another week, but eighteen.
Eighteen.
To see if a town will vote to raise and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to be added to the fire department equipment capital reserve fund previously established. Did it say equipment?
Yes.
Doesn't say, nothing about vehicles?
It says equipment.
Huh?
I believe it's apparatus, what was set, what was established, two thousand eight or it's apparatus?
It was a fire department apparatus capital fund, didn't say equipment? Okay.
What's the difference?
I will look.
What's the difference?
Well, because I-
More, I think apparatus is more comprehensive, right?
I would think so.
I think that's more expansive.
Yeah, that's my, I mean, when I think of equipment, I'm thinking of jaws of life. When I think of, when I think of apparatus, I'm thinking of fire engines and vehicles, yeah.
Yeah.
So which is the correct word?
Whatever it was established at, I'll go back to the original. What year?
Two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight?
It's on the online town report.
It's also in-
I want to see it hard copy.
What? It's in there. Phil, remember back in the day, they used to have the town reports like right in front of you, remember? In the selectmen's office upstairs, remember there was like this thing, you could just pull them out at any time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now they're online.
Good resource.
Yeah.
Scott, do you have any other changes?
That was it.
That was it.
I might have another week, but-
Another week.
There will be, I, I will tell you this-
We've given Sue enough to do.
I talked to Sue about this today, is, there are a few members of the, of the Budget Committee that have some concerns with Article 17 and the off-site improvement fees, their, their concern is that the developer is not mandated to pay that if they don't proceed with the development of that, of that project. So the question that was raised is what happens if they just walk away from this project? Who pays? And then the answer is, is that the town of Goffstown pays. So the question that I got was how are you going to word this thing? So that one is a tricky one.
What, what you could do is take that out, and if we, and fund the hundred and fifty through fund balance, add that to the amount of fund balance, and, but that doesn't take away the requirement for the off-site improvement fee, but if and when it comes in, it will go to the general fund to offset taxes, because the improvement will have already been made. That would be my suggestion to avoid, we don't want to misrepresent, obviously, that we're getting money that we're not, we may not be getting.
Well, what if we ask the developer for the check?
Well, I would guess it, he would say, not until I develop-
He offered it to us one time and we didn't take it.
He did?
That's, it's the same developer I'm thinking of, and it's the same project, it's the same amount of money.
I mean, if you had it in escrow, then it'd be, then it does change the story, but we'd have to have that.
And we did have that, like, on the Worley Hill Road project that hasn't gone forward, we had an escrow for-
Right, so, I mean, if this individual is serious and they, and they want to put that money in escrow, then-
Playing devil's advocate on this one, it's two years in the future, the grant, the, the impact fee is not available.
The off-site improvement fee, you mean?
Since the off-site improvement fee is not available, since the town did not appropriate money for that expenditure, that, that sum, we would have no choice but go into an article to appropriate the additional hundred and fifty, whether it's general, you know, budget money, or even if it's unreserved fund balance, it still has to be appropriated.
Your appropriations here, it's just the funding, you're, we're telling people that a hundred and fifty would come from the off-site improvement fees, which we may or may not get. So the safer way would be-
That amount, the voters are being told, no money's being raised from taxation.
Right.
So how do we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table? We can't, we can't take it out of general revenue.
That, that's why I'm suggesting the hundred and fifty gets added to the use of fund balance in this article. So you add a hundred and fifty to that one oh two number, and take out the off-site improvement fees, that doesn't mean they go away, that means that if and when they come in in the future, they just go into general fund.
Could it say off-site improvement fees or unreserved fund balance?
Yeah, I suppose it could, but I think DRA usually likes something a little more definitive.
Yeah, I think you're going to have to do it.
Add the one fifty to the fund, use the fund balance.
I don't know how you get away with not, I mean, because it's not a, it's not a guarantee.
Unless you put in there-
And I checked, and we don't have it.
-anticipated, hundred and fifty thousand dollars from anticipated off-site improvement fee or fund balance.
Is this, this will be money that will be paying a contractor, you know, assuming the article passes.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be design work in summer of next year, with possibly construction late in the fall or in fourteen, so it, once we do design and construction, the money has to be there to pay out.
Right.
And it might not be that, you know, the developer doesn't take out a building permit, he's not, might not be paying the hundred and fifty, even though it might have been an offer to pay it earlier.
I still think you got to add the whole thing in, I don't, I don't know-
I think it'd be cleaner just to add the one fifty to the use of fund balance.
I agree, you should, Sue, reword, okay, reword it, send it forward for review and-
Yeah, probably would be.
And we'll, so the next time-
And we can explain it in the voter's guide.
Right, there could be a note that says, you know, if the off-site improvement fees do come in, then this would be offset with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Or we expect that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be returned from off-site improvement fees, you know, because we do expect it.
Do they have any-
They are approved projects.
Right, right. So, Sue, you, these new words will be reviewed by the revenue office?
Yes.
And then you submit it to our attorney?
Once I get the petition articles in, too, I am doing them all at once, and that deadline is January eighth. And then after that, we firm it up before you go to, you have to post the warrant by last Monday in January. So we would have plenty of time to firm it up and to see the attorney's reviews.
Do you have any petition articles yet?
No. I should say we have no petition articles on our side, zoning has a couple.
Have we exhausted town administrator's report?
I believe we have.
A lot to organize this evening, thank you, Sue.
Mm-hmm.
Select this discussion, code business, fire department, job descriptions.
It was fire apparatus chief, just found it.
It's on Article sixteen.
Yeah, two thousand eight. Good catch.
I remember it being apparatus.
Last time I was, last time, last week we spoke on job descriptions, and I wanted to give you some more information regards to some of the questions that, that you had that evening. One was the forest fire warden's job description, it also included the deputy forest fire warden's job description, want to take that, take one and pass it along? Take one of these and pass it along, too. Thank you. So what's going around now is the job description for the forest fire warden and the deputy forest fire warden that was, that was asked last time we were, I was here, and also, lastly, what's going around is the blue colored sheet, and this is something that was developed by the National Fire Academy and FEMA, and developing a national model for fire professional development. And so it shows where you would try to get your associate's degree, your bachelor's and masters, kind of like in a pyramid example, showing from the firefighter coming in the door, to eventually reaching that chief fire officer level. And I think, Scott, you had, you had concerns over, you know, whether bachelors or, or associates would be, be appropriate, and this is kind of where I, where I extracted that, that standard from. And what, what I did also was I took your suggestions on, on a couple of things, for example, the training officer, I took the shell out of the essential duties and responsibilities and reworded them, so it did include shell. And as far as the authority position, I extracted out the residency requirement, and also under the education experience, I put in, if you look under, I'll read it to you under experience, it used to say must, in a couple, couple areas, I said the successful candidate should have completed a minimum of twelve years of full-time fire department experience, or the equivalent of sixteen years active status on a fire department call force, or equivalent combination of both. And then it is desirable of the candidate to have the ability to attain chief fire officer designation by the Commission on Professional Crediting and Centers for Public Safety Excellence. So you see, I've extracted out the must and shells and put the desirables and should.
They do not have those before them, just so you know?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. That's the only significant changes from our last discussion.
do fit into a national model. Any further changes other than the ones the chief already spoke about?
I have a question. On deputy forest warden under three fire suppression, it says proceed according to the town fire plan.
That, that would, that would be under our townwide emergency operations plan, and they've changed that, that is based on the rules set by RSA, I believe, two-two-seven, and when, when the, when the, after nine eleven, the, we, we've kind of transferred over to this national response framework, and that, that took the firefighting end of it into a emergency support function under our emergency operation plan for the town.
So, are these job descriptions, would they allow us to advertise all these jobs?
Would who?
I'm just thinking outside the box here, you don't?
I don't understand the question.
Are, are these job, you know, I've been in other work situations where you have a complete new job description, you might want to hire to those job descriptions.
Oh, are you asking whether or not we could hire these?
Yeah, advertise these positions according to the new job descriptions.
Yeah, you never put in the whole job description, you post the openings with the job descriptions, but you're, obviously your ads and your postings are much shorter.
It's why I hope to have this as, as a foundation, and again, with the opportunity to update them as needed, and that's why I think the format makes it easier to do that. So in the future, if, if the, the position has significantly changed, more or less, and you've got an opening, you can take this, take this job description and determine if any changes or updates need to be made. And by the way, it's broken down, you can, it has better flow than it had in the past, so you'd be able to change that, I think, quicker or more effectively.
Are your standards set such that if you did have a vacancy, there would be qualified people out there to fill these positions?
It's the typical, like, for example, when you get to the, to the level that we're talking about tonight, for example, it's the higher end, the, the executive officers, the fire chiefs, the deputy chiefs, the captains, and so on, these positions, these were also modeled closely to other departments, and what the standard is that are out there in the region. I didn't take stuff out of Seattle, or, or San Francisco or something like that, it's within the, within the region.
Okay.
Would the board like to move forward with these job descriptions?
We want to accept the chief's recommendations as given.
Second.
It's a great deal of work, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions for the chief?
Good job, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
Then I'd like to hear your, your vote on this motion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I left the original copies with Catherine for, for your signature when you're ready. Thank you.
Nice job on those.
Thank you.
I had old.
You're still unowed?
Yeah, I think it was a couple of months ago, I'm, maybe I just forgot, but I know I, I mentioned the idea of having a discussion or a group of selectmen and employees talk about a bi-weekly, going towards more of a bi-weekly pay. I don't know where we left off on that, we talked about, seemed like there was, there was some, some interest in doing that, obviously you're reducing the number of transactions. It's, it's something that's very, very prevalent in both public and private sector, being paid every other week, and it, it does cut down significantly on the number of, of transactions that, that have to be done, and, you know, I, I just didn't know where, where we stood on that. And, you know, I, I just didn't know where, where we stood on that, and, and if it's something that...
Last time we discussed that, Scott, I, I believe it is tied up in our collective bargaining agreements?
That would have to be negotiated, yes.
As part of the next round of negotiations, or could it be out of cycle negotiation?
I mean, I would just like to see it out of cycle because I, I don't.
It is possible to have out of cycle.
Yeah, we...
I, I'm just thinking.
I don't want to convey negotiations, prior negotiations, but this issue, this isn't the first time this issue has come up. It has been discussed before and we could never get to that point with everyone.
With...
And if you do this, this is something you want to do for everyone.
We are one pay system here, where you can't, it would be difficult to implement it for one-fourth of the employees, and then another fourth and another fourth.
I would be an advocate for bi-weekly, but like I said, you need to get buy-in.
Our budget keepers would quit on us.
I think you get buy-in by, by starting with, with, with our, one group of employees and I just don't see, I don't see a whole lot of pushback, maybe I'm wrong, but, I mean, this is something that significantly helps, helps us in terms of keeping our costs in check. Everybody, it seems like, almost everybody that I know gets paid every other week. And I just, I would, I would like to see us, you know, go in that direction, we keep on hearing that, everyone, you know, we can't do it, we can't do it, we can't do it, but you gotta start somewhere, and this is something that doesn't cost really anybody anything, you're still getting paid, you're just getting paid every other week.
Could this be part of the finance implementation software? When the new system, when the key is turned for the new system, we at that point start with...
Still need to negotiate it.
Yeah, you're still...
But in the meantime, you'd have to negotiate towards that date. I mean, it's... I, I maintain this would be, just too many headaches to do it for a small, one group of people and then think about doing it for other groups in future years.
So I, I do have a, to play devil's advocate, so if you wait until next year and then you part, you put that as part of your, your discussion you're throwing on the table, and if only one union agrees, then, oh, we can't do it because not everybody agreed. I mean, you have to take, at some point, you've got to take a leap here on doing things, you know? You cannot, you know, it will never be the same for everybody, and I just, you know, this is just another, we keep on talking about, can we try something to try to save money? This is a, a way to do it.
Not that it saves...
It saves transactional time.
We still have the same staff, but it makes them more efficient in their duties.
Saves money, saves conservative money.
It saves money on processing of transactions.
Well, there's a transaction fee for every check.
Along those same lines, do we still issue paper checks to town employees? Because we should, well, we should consider going to mandatory direct deposit, the state does it now. You cannot get a paper check from the state anymore, it's mandatory direct deposit.
That's interesting, because Department of Labor said we had to offer both.
I have no choice. It has to be direct deposit.
I don't either.
No choice. And that's, that's a big savings too.
Maybe that's changed, we'll check with the Department of Labor, but...
Interesting.
We've been like at the state now for a couple of years.
A long time.
Couple of years.
I believe I read in my military retired pay, it's now, as of this year, it's mandatory, all pensions are electronic, and they're trying to...
I think one of our unions is all electronic.
There's big savings.
Phil, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, I have a question. Talking about saving money, but the concern that I have is if you start one portion of employees on this and you have two payroll systems, does that cause more problems and cause more money in the law?
Yeah.
Yes.
The savings.
There is no savings if you incrementally implement, that's my whole point I was just discussing. There has, should be a process, implement this across the board. I, I'm in favor of it, but it's the process for implementing it.
We can, we can have discussions with any group.
I, I mean, before we start saying that the answer's going to be no, we could easily have Sue meet with the, the bargaining units, their representatives, and say, here's what we'd like to do, here are some of the pluses, one, we'd like to go bi-weekly, and two, we'd like to, you know, we, we'd like to go entirely direct deposit.
One, one union agreed to that, so one union is all direct deposit. But there are people with no checking accounts or savings.
Then they'll have to get one.
That argument holds water.
Exactly.
Level, it's like, you can open an account for free.
Right, and you can allocate, if you have child support, if other things, you can allocate where the money goes and... I think, I think the problem is, is that, you know, I mean, when, you know, ninety to ninety-five percent of, you know, American workers are get, get paid bi-weekly, and, and they, and they're forced to go direct deposit or whatever, and then we, we say, well, we can't do it, and we can't ask, and, you know, God forbid, we should have one group that is and one group that isn't. I mean, eventually you have to do something, I mean, we look like, I don't know, it seems like it's very defeatist. It's like, nope, can't do it, nope, can't do it, we've, we've never done it that way. And it's like, you have to, you know, take a, take a dive into the deep end every once in a while. And it does, this, this saves us money because we have to pay a transaction cost on every single draft that we, check that we cut.
And you need to change people's way of thinking because it's really convenient, you never have to go to the bank to deposit your check, it goes in at midnight on Thursday, it's there, bingo. Very, very convenient, so I can acquire here.
And I think most of our people are probably on a direct deposit, there are some that do some direct deposit, but then they also want a paper check for, for a part of it.
But they can still do that, just going to go into a different account, they can, you can allocate where you want your money to go to, and then, you know, I just, if we can't do something like this, then we can't do anything. This is easy stuff.
Well, I can meet with, if the board wants, I can meet with the president of each union and the HR committee and...
Yep, we should.
Let me check with Department of Labor though, because last word from I had from HR was, you couldn't, it couldn't be mandatory.
Yeah, I bet if you work for the Department of Labor though, you're required to have direct deposits.
Yeah, if you can ask them, I have to do it.
Ask, ask them what their supervisors require for their paycheck, and then say, if it's good enough for you, was good for the gander, good for the goose.
And even when we do make that pay change, can we also make that for the call firefighters, instead of getting paid once a month, get paid every two weeks like everybody else, so we don't...
That costs money.
Well, Mark, Mark brings up a good point.
It's good.
I'd like to start with the call firefighters now, I mean, we have no union, we have no nothing, I mean, we could start now.
That's, that's a valid point on the opposite side of the coin. The frequent thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, do some research, please Sue.
Will do.
Board seems to be encouraging in that direction, but it's the process of working it out. We have two, finished up with new business, or were we were?
We were still on old business, any other old business?
New business then.
Well, new is that Crispin's House, I don't know if that's new or is that you want to do that in the budget, but that, that is kind of new.
Yes, let's discuss that. I'll lead off, my preference is that it would be a petitioned article that the selectmen can endorse or vote as we wish to support it.
If you're looking for a second, I'll second that.
Is it petitioned auto?
Yes, let them, let them start it and we'll back them up.
Well, if I can add to that. I don't have a problem for us putting it on, the reason why I don't have a problem for us putting it on is because of what it really does for Gostown. I mean, you're talking, you're talking over fourteen hundred students that, that deal with this, within the, within the community of Gostown alone with that. They did provide services, they do help the, they do work, the diversion program is important. Diversion program has been working with the Gostown Police Department for, since its inception. And I, I believe that the funding sources that they had were both state and county, that have gone away over the last two years, is, and that's the reason why I would support it. As us putting it on, and, and I think that we should put it on.
Thank you for that view, Scott.
And I, and I jumped in the sword earlier, you know, I think that these are budget items, these are reoccurring expenses, these are part of the social services that we provide, part of youth diversion, they deal with our police department, they, you know, it has a lot of different hands there, and I also think it's partly a school issue as well. But it's interesting that they were funded through the county budget, which then got in budget cuts and they cut it. So the county had it in their budget, which they thought it was important, but then, as they were going through all their different things, they decided to reduce it, this is a program that they felt, oh, maybe it can kind of sustain itself, but I think what we're doing is we're, we're cutting our nose to spite our face.
Scott's point is that at the county level, it was a legitimate activity for governmental programs. Is it, would it also be true at the municipal level then? But they were, it was administered as grants. It was administered as grants.
So the, the money was available but had they administered it out of the county as a grant?
And the governor's commission was also.
Through the state level.
Right, through the state level. And those monies, this is a nonprofit, that's the only difficulty, okay? And, and number one, this is a, a new program, we haven't done it before, and it's something that the community should be able to participate in the determination of how taxpayer dollars are spent.
Well, if, if we, I, I hear you Phil, and that has been the tradition, is any kind of new funding...
A new program.
Well, it's not a new program, but the funding would be new.
It's new program to the taxpayers of Gostown.
Right. Would, would you envision then the articles stating something to the effect, should this article pass, it will be included in future years' annual budgets?
I don't have a problem with that.
Scott? You know, on the flip side, we did talk about trying to keep these warrant articles to a minimum, and I look at, you know, even Main Street for that matter, I mean, we voted on this thing forever, it's like, you would think, I don't know, to me, I'm not, it's twenty thousand, and some people say, well, it's only twenty thousand, some people say, hey, well, it's still twenty thousand, it's a lot, and it's a certain amount of money, people should vote on it every year. But, you know, we don't bat an eye on some of these other things that are, you know, huge amounts of money. And I, I just, I just see this as a...
Yes, yes we do, Scott.
Well, we do, but, I mean, there are cer, we just encumbered one million dollars, and, I mean, I understand, you know, three hundred and something dollars for road resurfacing, but I just see this as a really solid investment in our, in our community. And, you know, I've, I've sat through some of these, I've been in there where they had diversion across the hall, and I've seen the impact that pro, this program has on this, on this town, and I think it's a very tiny investment.
Well, I understand it's a tiny investment, but if you're looking at twenty thousand dollars, the department that you're gonna, you're looking at is the police department, and I guarantee you that if you ask the police chief, if you had twenty thousand dollars, do we put it towards this program, and we're gonna put it in your department, do we put it towards this program, and do we put it towards a police officer? So when you say it's only twenty thousand dollars and this program is important, but I'll tell you, to me, the police officer, if you're gonna put money in the budget, I would rather see twenty thousand dollars put into the budget towards a police officer than this.
Typically nonprofits, when they do appear in the budget, appear under other general government. That's where your conservation commission is, budget committee, budget is, and V and A had been there before, Red Cross.
And I'll tell you, when the Main Street was first put on, it was told, they were told that it would always go on as a special article. If you want to change it, then you put it in the article.
But you can't say that now, I mean, I mean, you say that, but no board at that time can dictate what future boards are gonna do, I mean, it, it's...
Well, I'm just telling you, I'm still on the board, and I was one of the selectmen that said that it would.
Okay, so you can...
As long as I'm on the board, that's what I'm gonna say.
You took the pledge, that's okay.
Put it in, put it...
That's okay, that's good.
It's not a pledge, it's not a pledge, it's being honest with the people, and when I tell somebody, my word is my bond.
That's a pledge, and that's fine, I'm not held to it.
So do, do you want, since Main Street is a reoccurring expense, did you want to change that warrant article to say, in future years, it will be in the budget?
If we're considering putting Crispin's House in the budget, we certainly ought to move Main Street into the budget, I mean, that only makes sense to me. They're both great programs, Crispin's House does wonderful things, it's a little bit of a slippery slope, how many nonprofits do you roll over into the budget? And where do you draw the line?
Well, these are really local ones, they only serve...
I understand, yeah, I understand, this one is specifically local, and as long as we keep it local, then I'm more comfortable with that.
If some future board, if that did transpire to happen, and if some future board felt like underfunding that particular activity, then the nonprofit would still have the option of a petitioned article? It does become a, a long-term obligation of the town, once it's in the general revenue.
And if we can assure through language that the money is only to be used for Gostown residents, I'm, I'm certainly more comfortable, as long as we can tighten it up that way.
That would be hard to do with general funds.
Well, you see their budget and you know the twenty thousand dollars can easily just be spent on Gostown residents.
That's why I specifically asked them that question.
And, and I'll go back to what I said earlier, I mean, I, you know, you can make a, a really strong argument that if it was, why is the town, but, you know, why are they coming to the town, obviously if it's a warrant article, I understand that piece of it, but I could make a good enough argument that should be ten thousand dollars in each, in each budget, because there are just as many good reasons how the school benefits from Crispin's House on a day-to-day basis, as the town does on a day-to-day basis.
Well, if you take fourteen sixty-four and divide it into twenty thousand, that's how much it's gonna cost for each one of those. He said fifty-five, so I'm just gonna, without doing the math and...
You know, I'm not, I'm not saying that, we, I don't think, we don't have all the answers all the time, I, I, I would love to get the budget committee's input on it, because the reality of it is, is no matter what happens, if it goes part of the budget, they're gonna still weigh in on it, and if it's a separate article, petition article, they're gonna vote on it. And the same thing with the argument that you made, Carlos, about, you know, should the Main Street, should we put language in that to say, okay, if you vote yes, it's gonna go into the budget in subsequent years? It seems to me that, I mean, the Main Street one's been going off for how long now, ten, twelve years, I mean, it's been a long time.
It has. So you want to...
It's a successful program.
We've, we've, we've all heard discussion then of the, the three possibilities. Funded from general funds, under other government, other general government activities, us sponsoring an article, or having a petitioned article. You know, the petitioned article was just my suggestion, that's the bottom, that's the fallback, I, I'd be willing to support either of the other two, if other members are so inclined.
I, I would just be curious to see what the budget committee thinks about it too, because it's, if it was to be part of the budget, I mean, they could, if we had put this in the budget, they could have cut it, you know?
I, I, I would be, I wouldn't want to put something in the budget that would then throw darts.
I understand that, but if it was, if the question was raised, we, we got a presentat, we received a presentation, what are your feelings on this? You know, here are some of the benefits.
I think we ought to go to the budget committee saying, we're leaning towards including both Main Street and Crispin's House in the... We oughta go to the budget committee saying, we're leaning towards including both Main Street and Crispin's House in the budget. What are your thoughts on this thing? Because I know budget committee members have always said, Main Street, it's a no-brainer, you know?
Most, most.
Yeah, the majority.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
By far.
Majority.
Scott, you'll bring that forward?
I will.
So it sounds like the majority of the board is leaning either towards the board putting on a warrant article for this or putting it in the budget.
I don't want it in the budget. I want it as a warrant article. I don't have a problem putting it in the budget after this passes next year.
Because what would happen is if it was in the operating budget, okay, say the budget committee says, yes, we'll support it. It's in the operating budget, the budget gets voted down.
Right.
Or in default budget, they don't get funded.
Or, they could get funded if this board felt that it was an important thing and they'd have to look for ten, or ten to twenty thousand dollars elsewhere, but, um, no, I agree with that.
Well, and, and you know, I'm looking forward to a possible, solid support of a budget that we're proposing.
I think the safest way is go with Phil's idea for the first year.
To, the safe route is to sponsor an article.
And state that if it passes, it will be included in the following year's budgets. And I do the budget, I do Main Street the same way.
That would identify the will of the voters to handle it in that, under that process. And it would satisfy in the long term what's cost.
I'm not seeing why we need to do that intermediate step, but.
Yeah, do I, but.
Well, I, I value, I value Phil's vote on the budget. Do you feel?
Well, yeah, no, I'm just, I, I guess, I could, I could present this to the budget committee and they could say exactly what Phil is saying. And then if that's the case, then so be it. But if there, but if there seems to be strong support for putting it in the budget, then maybe so be it. I mean, I, I'm just curious to see, you know, they are our, they are the other branch that we have to work with.
You, you can bring forward to the budget committee that same idea, but it also bring forward, uh.
Yeah, of course. But the other op- there are three options.
Yes. And provide, do that, and I guess, uh, board would support doing, do all that, so bring us feedback.
All right.
And go to the committee reports.
Your chairman.
Then let's do that. Have we sufficiently talked about budgets, Scott?
Well, tomorrow will be a big night.
They're all big nights.
They're all, but tomorrow will be the bigger, the biggest of the nights, because I think that's when we're gonna start to take some votes to firm up, um, you know, budget and these warrant, these, uh, separate articles. So, uh, the, as you know, the, the board voted to take out five hundred thousand dollars of the road program, and now it's at a million dollars, but they also put, uh, forward a hundred and eighty, some five thousand dollars for the ten wheeler.
And they cut the one eighteen for the tractor.
And they cut the one eighteen for the tractor. So I then asked them, I said, well, if we were somehow able to address the ten wheeler out of funds from this current budget, and that's what we're trying to figure out as, with the special meeting at the end of the month, would they consider restoring that one eighty-five? And that seemed to be, that will be a topic of discussion. So, you know, that's kind of where we are there. They've already had discussions about the, um, the bargaining unit, gone through all of that. The, um, you know, there's, there's still discussions about wages, you know, non-union wages, that's still there. From a couple of members. What else do we have? That was.
Did they have a goal of a number they wanted to get to or a tax rate they wanted to achieve?
No, I, I was pretty, I, I, I shared with them, you know, your, your, the spreadsheet that you created with respect to the tax rate. And, um, based upon the actions that they've taken so far, the tax rate, I think, is a penny less, or around a penny, uh, from the, from the two thousand and eleven tax rate. So, kind of shared that, which was thirty some odd cents, uh, more than this current year's. So, and, and really the difference is the road, is the road program. The road program was funded at half a million dollars this current year, and it's budgeted next year for five, for, well, a million, so that's a five hundred thousand dollar difference. So right then and there, that is the, you know, kind of the, the difference, so.
So they should be firming up their.
Everything.
Budget numbers and the recommendations on all of this tomorrow night?
If not tomorrow night, then there's, there's a meeting that's scheduled for Thursday. Hopefully, we won't need it, but it is, it is, and not only that, but then we have the school issues to contend with. The, um, with respect to the school, um, right now, as you saw, we were only, what, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars more than the default. School is in a very similar position. I believe it's right now, it's about, the budget committee's number is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than the school's default budget, uh, and that, um, and of, of that amount of money, two hundred thousand dollars is, is the Mountain View Middle School roof. So there was some discussion about putting that out as a separate article. I'm not sure where the school board is gonna go on that. I had, we had chatted last week, and you guys weren't here, about, um, they have, the school board has not yet voted whether to put the elementary school, renovations and additions on the ballot, on the warrant for next year. But what's gonna happen is, I, I assume that they're gonna do that tonight. They're gonna take a vote yea or nay. I don't know the outcome of that, but, um, I, you know, and that's something that large. I mean, it's one thing for me to vote my conscience on, you know, books or teachers or something like that, but a project like that, I need a little bit of a direction. We chatted a little bit about, about that, you know, last Monday. So I just kinda need to know what you, what you want me to know.
Last time, my, my understanding was you needed more information. Did you get that?
No, because they didn't, um, they have not yet, the school board was meeting tonight. I don't even know if it's, if it's even gonna be on the ballot, so. It could, it, they could vote tonight to say, you know, we're gonna hold off. So I don't know.
But if, if they, Scott, if they make a decision to put a warrant article on for renovation of the school.
Right.
You're asking us.
How do you want me to vote?
I thought we've already had this, this discussion and, and we were favorable towards supporting the renovation of the elementary schools. To the point that we would not be pushing for renovation of the fire departments in the same year.
Right.
That, that was a very, that was a very good sign of our support towards that project.
I think, to me, that was that any school, a school renovation would, would precede a, uh, fire department, um, renovation project. I shared with, I shared my concerns, you know, last week, and that is, the unknowns are this, uh, area agreement. That's an unknown. The current population of Mountain View is an unknown. I mean, stands at eight hundred and sixty to eight hundred and seventy kids, of which sixty to seventy of those are from Dunbar. So it'd be going down to eight hundred-ish. The school board, again, I don't know where they're going, but, you know, back in the day, when they had the fourth graders there, and that's not the, always the greatest thing, having, having that, that route, but they had over, they had eleven hundred and fifty students there at one point. So I just don't know how that drives with the elementary schools and.
So do I understand that tonight, the school board's gonna start to take some definitive action as to what, what they're gonna bring forward as far as school.
That's what, kind of what Diane McCarthy suggested, was that they were gonna take action tonight on what they were gonna do. But I just, I don't know.
So is the budget committee dealing with the school articles tomorrow night, or just the town side?
It's very possible that, you know, you've, Sue, you've seen some of these meetings. I mean, they jump around all over the place, so. I would suspect that they're gonna do it Tuesday or Thursday.
I, I gotta tell you, I'm a little disappointed with the school board. We tried to reach out to them a number of months ago and say, let's work together as we move forward so that we understand what big ticket items we're gonna bring before the voters, fire departments versus schools. And we haven't heard anything back from them, at least, I mean, I don't, I haven't seen any positive return of information. And I'm a little disappointed on that. I thought we started out on, on, on a proper course to deal holistically with the taxpayers' dollars from the town side and the school side. And we're right back in the same spot as we always are every year, forcing the, the voters to decide whether we put, build a fire station or we build a school. And we're, and we may end up with them saying, forget it, we're not spending any money and nothing's gonna go forward. And I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that there wasn't some coordinated effort to move in that direction, to follow up on what I thought was a good start to things.
I will do, as you know, I will advocate for whatever you want me to advocate for. I will abstain from the vote. I will vote yes. I will vote no. You tell me what you want, what you wanna do.
My question or my concern is, we worked very hard with the fire department. I thought the fire department was gonna be a positive thing this year, and we switched gears into the school, which I had no issues with, but next year, if we have to go back to this issue again of is it school or gonna be fire? Let's say something doesn't pass this year, as we talked about, who do we sacrifice next year? I know for a fact, we cannot sacrifice the fire department anymore, Scott. I mean, conditions are deplorable. Station seventeen has no water in it. You need to, you need to do something with the water. Seventeen needs a new roof. We're dealing, we're gonna be dealing with asbestos issues on the floor, all three stations. I mean, we've compounded it to the point now that, I mean, who do we, who do we go for next year if we don't, if we don't get it, if we don't get the school this year? Next year, we're back to that same battle again, and I just, you know, life safety or.
Let's, let's, uh. Can I just, at one point, to, to, um, address with what Carlos suggested? They also have two bargaining units, but they are at an impasse and they're going to mediation this, at, around next couple of weeks or so. That being the case, you've done this before, if they do not reach anything at mediation, it is too late for fact-finding. I mean, so you will not, so if they, if they fail to come to terms at mediation, then the, you will have nothing on the ballot. But if they were to have something on the ballot, I don't have any idea what that amount could be. I mean, it could be several hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, so when you add that to the, to the, and I, I don't know where, what they're, I don't know where they're at. So they're at an impasse, and again, a lot of these are moving parts for them too. I mean, they don't know if something is, they're expected to make a decision, and maybe that they're saying, well, you know, we've got three or four different things. If we don't have teachers' contracts, then maybe we should put the building project on. If we have the teachers' contracts, maybe, you know, maybe we won't put the building project, and maybe they just don't know. And I'll, I'll give them, you know, the benefit of the doubt there, but I'm at a loss as to what you want me to do. I know what you wanna do.
Fine, I mean.
I just don't know what the others wanna do.
Does he support or not support the school articles?
Or if you wanted to, or whatever. And/or if you want, if you just wanna say, hey, you know, you've got, you can do, you know, vote your conscience? I mean, just give me whatever direction you want.
I'm not gonna change from what I said last time. You're gonna get to that discussion at that night, and there might be things in that discussion that, information that comes out that is critical to the vote. So I can't tell you to vote one way or the other.
So you're telling him to vote based upon the best information he has at that time?
Correct. That would be the, in my opinion, that would be the fairest way to vote. I mean, we could, we could say yes or no tonight, and then between now and then, something come forward and the rest of the board doesn't know about it.
And if, if that's the case, and that it also includes an, an abstention then? If I feel, I feel like I don't have enough information or I don't feel comfortable.
I'll, I'll agree with that.
Problem is Scott's the only one of the five who's getting the information.
Right.
You know? The rest of us are just sitting back, not knowing what's gonna come out of it.
Right. It's, it's, it is a tricky spot to be in, so.
Well, I, I agree with all that. Are you satisfied with that?
I'm satisfied, no. Do what I think is right, you know?
I've been looking forward to the planning board report.
You have, huh?
You've been biting your tongue over here.
So have I.
I have too, yes.
I've been biting my tongue. I thought I've been quite vocal tonight.
Please tell us what happened.
Well, there was a, um, completeness, completeness review and subdivision, um, hearing for a lot line adjustment, which was, uh, withdrawn, so that was easy. And the board voted to, uh, deny it without prejudice because of that. And there was a, uh, proposed zoning amendment, public hearing, uh, that we had, uh, for that. And, uh, one of the interesting things was, there was a member of the public, um, that, uh, it was a little, well, it was regarding the poultry, uh, permitting, making, allowing poultry to be a, a permitted use in the R one and the R two zone, and the.
So big birds coming back?
How many?
Well, wait a minute. The, 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 the member of the public started talking about neighbors' dogs barking.
At the chickens.
Well, then it came out that his position was that chickens make no noise, so they should be permitted. And I asked him if he was.
Never raised chickens before.
They don't make noise?
Well, he said chickens don't make noise.
Really?
And I said, well, I said, this is poultry, not chickens, I said, and if the dogs are bothering you, your neighbors now might have roosters, and would, which, he seemed to think that it was only dealt with chickens. But the amendment is poultry, which allows roosters, turkeys, emus.
Geese.
Ostriches.
Geese.
Geese.
Talking about noise.
Homing pigeons.
How did they vote on that article?
No, it was continued to January, uh, second for the.
Second public hearing.
We'll continue that one too.
Well, I'm sure you will, but I just figured out, I, I would let you know, there was one person who spoke on that. There was also, uh, new business, which was an interesting one, which was a conceptual, uh, for proposed subdivision over at Abington Square to, uh, for a new, uh, auto parts store.
That's a surprise.
Autozone. Which was, uh, a nice presentation.
The remainder of that development, instead of being two buildings, potentially, now it's three potential buildings?
Cor- well, yes, because the current, it would be subdivided, and there's an issue with, uh, the way the park is out in the front, because a portion of the way the lot line from CBS comes over, uh, rather, Rite Aid rather, comes over, kinda catches part of the, the fence in the lower left-hand corner of the park. Uh, seem to, um, but they're gonna work out some type of a, uh, an agreement where it'll be maintained by the, uh, by all the, uh, the properties that have.
So there's that much marketing, market for all these auto parts places? That seems strange.
Well.
Three within a half a mile of one of them.
No, 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 well, the up, well, yeah, yes, the economy and the way things are going, uh, the upcoming thing within the next, uh, few years are, are auto parts. It's a big market. It is. You know where to put your investments? In the next few years. And that was the planning board, the highlights of it.
Well, I can, I was, I was expecting a discussion on another item. There was, uh, tax deeding.
Yeah, yes. I want a little discussion on that. I wanna hear what the discussion was about.
Yeah, tell us on that. That's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
There were land, there were tax dealings on three properties, of which only two votes, you were one of them and voted in favor of.
Well, it came up, it came up as to why, and the discussion was, is that members don't have to give an explanation of how, of why they vote the way they do. Barbara brought up, the very thing was, is that you are an elected official and that voters do have a right to know how an elected official votes. And they choose not to make it public as to why they vote no. Well, I can't answer your question.
This is just advisory anyway.
I understand that, but still, that's obviously a block here of Redmond, Warden, and Meany. It was against all of these, and just, there, so there's no discussion offered, no reason as to why we should, we shouldn't take it.
No, it was specifically as-
So, they would, they would rather these parcels remain-
Vacant?
Vacant, tax, taxes be, continue to be not paid, rather than-
I, I can't, I can't answer that. I don't know that.
That's, that would be the outcome of their decision.
I understand. I brought, I, I brought that up.
They're in favor of not collecting proper taxes and rather than selling the property to someone who would pay taxes.
And I understand you can't read their minds, so there was no, they had, they offered no explanation as to why.
No, it was asked when they said it, there's, there's no requirement to give an explanation as to how you vote, why you voted the way you did.
And then there were some abstentions. Were there any reasons for an abstention? Was any of those given?
They're not in the minutes, so.
It would not have made a difference on that vote though.
No, I know that, but sometimes people say I abst, I abstain because I, I know these folks, or I don't have enough information to make, to, to render a vote.
Financial.
Yeah.
Um, well, it was an advisory opinion of that board, and, uh, the three parcels in question, Sue, uh, at some point, we're gonna be asked to go forward with the tax deed.
I thought you'd wanna wait till after the holidays.
Yeah, right. Well, just, Mr. Chair, I mean, for the purpose of, when, can you just let the, the viewers know that what timeframe, uh, is the situation where the town can tax deed? How many years? I just, yeah, I just wanted to, so folks who don't pay their taxes-
Taxes for three years.
Three years.
You know, right. There, then, we go through, we go through a process where we, uh, the owners are notified and they have appropriate amounts of time to respond, but the, the process ends with us tax-deading the property.
One parcel's vacant, one is collapsed, and the other one, we think, may be abandoned, of the three.
I, I just wanted the public, you know, to know that-
We're not just swooping in and taking someone's property.
You know, um, in all the years that I've been on the board, payment plans are initiated, we work with the property owners as, as, as best we can. These are kind of, you know, egregious cases of either abandonment, et cetera, where it just doesn't make practical sense not to take ownership of these, of, of these properties.
Get them back on a tax roll.
And then you get them back on the tax rolls, where somebody who wants to use the property or the land can pay taxes on it and, and we move on. A lot of people have just abandoned this, you know? Doesn't make sense, so.
That decision doesn't make sense to me either. Okay. Thank you for the reports on the two boards, committees. There's no one here from the public, so we won't have a second public comment session. We're getting near the end.
Sorry.
Scott?
Two things. Lamson, we've heard, right, we've sent that letter out?
Sent the letter. I've talked to someone. I've talked, no, they're, they've responded. I've been in correspond, uh, telephone conversations with, um, one of the owners, and, uh, basically, the way we left it is, they all have to agree to this, or we're not entering into the agreement, so they were going to all talk amongst themselves.
Do we give them a deadline saying we need, we need, if it's our, our deadline is the warrant articles? Is, is the?
I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say, hey, you know, we-
Wouldn't worry about it, you know? It's in their court.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, um, the other thing that I wanted to, to bring up was, I, I'm not gonna, I won't be here on the twenty-eighth, uh, when we have that meeting, and I know we're gonna be talking about the, uh, the ten-wheeler. I reached out to, to Steve Fornier, 'cause he's, uh, if you don't know, he was, he's in that business. He's, he's been in that business almost his whole life. And I asked him, you know, some questions about, you know, the frame and, you know, can you replace the frame, and well, the answer is, yeah, you can replace the frame.
You gotta strip the truck down to new frame rails?
Right, exactly.
It sometimes costs more to do that than it does to-
Right, but, um, you know, I guess my point is, I, I know we have the issue of we don't wanna go and have a lot of vehicles that are all old, that are just dying on you, and then you're in a really bad, bad position. But on the flip side of it, um, you know, if it's something that, that we can do, where we can replace the frame, um, and the frame rails, and it's a ten thousand dollar expense, and it's gonna buy us another three or four years, then do we not even, I don't, do we even get anything from DPW on that? And I, and I think, don't we do that as our due diligence? You know, what is the cost, you know, to-
Carl was in last. He said someone was there that day, but they didn't have his written estimate for repairing.
Right, right. It was repair, but as not replacing the frame rail.
Right.
Oh, you're trying to replace.
Complete replacement. What they do, Sue, is they take the entire cab engine, they put two brand-new frame rails down, they put all the old, new, used pieces back on together.
They put the suspension back on, they put everything back.
But I'm saying, if you have a, you know, I was talking to Steve, if your, if your cab is in, is in, is in good condition, if your motor has, you know, certain amount of hours or miles on it, it's something that you can consider doing.
I went and, I went and looked at the truck, and I mean, there's just the rust.
Yeah, the truck's junk.
All, I mean, you, you gotta replace lines, you gotta replace, uh, spring shackle holders.
That's what happens.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the truck is, is just so far gone that it, I mean, we could, we could do, this would be a Band-Aid fix to fix this truck for another three or four years, and then you probably wouldn't get what you were, you know, what you would get into it. I mean-
And not only that, we've asked our DPW director to go out and get professional recommendations. He's done that.
Yeah.
Why are we second guessing that? Because Steve Fornier has done this all his life, but we've, we've, we've gone out and the DPW director, under our direction, has gone out and sought out recommendations from professionals in, in the field, and this is what he's coming back with, and I-
Well, I never, I never, did you see anything from a, from someone that said, hey, this is what it would cost to repair it, or I believe it's repairable, or I didn't see that?
I just got what was in the, the pictures and the information we got, and I mean, that's, that's all, I mean-
Yeah, but-
That prompted me to go look at it. I mean, I just wanted to see if it was really what it is, you know, I mean, if you're asking me if I saw a quote for, is it gonna cost seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars to make the repairs, I haven't seen that quote. I think any of us have seen that quote or anything like that, or anything in, in that information. I, I mean, I'd like to see us, I mean, try to come up with, buying a used truck, take a used truck, you know, work a used truck for a year, and then when it comes time after that, put it next year's budget. Let's, you know, let's take that truck, we spend, you know, and, and use it as a trade-in for, for something, you know, but.
Where, will be presented requests, proposal, bids on the twenty-eighth, and we'll discuss all those options. What do you have, Phil?
If we were gonna buy a used truck, where do we get that money?
Where are we gonna get the money? You have the, you know, you're talking about the one eighty, it's part of the one eighty-five.
Yeah, yeah. Instead of, instead of spending the one eighty-fives, I mean, spend-
No, 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 no. The point I'm making is, when are we buying the truck?
I don't know. When are we buying the truck? The RFP, what's-
That's why we're having a meeting.
Yeah, that's why we're having the-
Emergency meeting.
No, 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 you're missing my point.
You're talking about the delay in getting the truck, and what are you gonna do?
You're missing my point. It sounds eas, it's easy statement to say for people who are listening, oh, well, they should just buy a used truck.
No, okay.
If we buy the used truck, I ask where the money's coming from. You're saying, taking out of the one eighty-five, the one eighty-five that's in the twenty thirteen budget that hasn't been approved yet, which gets approved in March, so we gotta wait till March to buy the used truck. So, we have no truck for the winter, so buying the used truck does not get us through the winter. That's my point. I'm not the meaning, I'm, I'm just-
Yeah, we already know that. Buying the used truck of next, after next March is too late.
And the other thing is that, you know, I, I represent this board on, on the budget committee, and I've got two or three pretty folks that are in that business. They own trucks, they service trucks, et cetera. So, they're asking me questions about, did you see about a glider kit? And I'm like, ah, what's a glider kit? And, you know, all these other things, okay? I don't know this stuff.
Question of, who's the select, who's the budget committee rep to public works?
Colas Adams is.
No, 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 uh, Guy Karen.
Doesn't he have any answers?
But my, my question is, is that this, this is what gets asked of me at these meetings, you know, are there, what are the other options? And I have, you know, although we were verbally told that, you know, we don't think that it's repairable, but I, and again, I know, I understand you're supposed to, you know, you, you hire somebody to do the job, and you, and you're supposed to take their recommendation. I just never saw, you know, what were the alternatives, you know? What are the pros and cons of, okay, would it cost ten thousand dollars to do a repair, and you'll be lucky if it gets you another two or three years? But if we put in thirty thousand, we think we can get four or five out of it. But then again, even if we did that, do we wanna back up all of our other, I mean, I, I didn't really get all that. And that's the questions that get asked of me at budget committee meetings. Did you get that? And my response is, no, I didn't get that.
Replacing a vehicle have, they have so many options, just as we've been discussing here tonight, that it becomes, uh, too wound up for the budget committee to, to work all those solutions. It is, they have, ultimately, you go with the, the best professional advice you have, and you, you budget for that amount, or you make a decision not to budget for that amount, but rather than keep working at the death, looking after option after op, option after option.
Well, I guess, you know, the, on the twenty-eighth, the, their bids will be open, so if, if we, the issue of repairability, will need to come to some sort, we're either gonna buy new, buy used, or repair, and no matter what we do, we're gonna be, we could, we could be potentially encumbering funds from this year to do that. That's all I'm saying.
Carl says that he will have a quote to repair, replace the frame of the ten-wheeler before the twelve, twenty-eight meeting.
Thank you.
I mean, it just, it just demonstrates that we did our due diligence on this, that's all.
And if you get that quote?
I'll forward it to all of you.
Thank you.
We also have an advisor, the roads ICU's caution, and Shirley Hill Road is closed between Van Buren and Kennedy Hill due to an accident.
Uh, which road?
Shirley Hill Road is closed.
Motion to adjourn, no kidding.
Oh, wait, wait, fall.
Not yet.
Sure. We have no public.
I believe we have some, uh, non-public activities before we-
Adjourn.
Just adjourn.
Illegal claims and, um-
Illegal claims?
Legal, legal.
Motion to go into a non-public session, RSI ninety-one A, colon, three, two, uh, illegal claims and a compensation. You'll do them both at the same time?
Okay.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, we will, we will not be meeting on Christmas Eve, correct?
No, or, or, or New Year's Eve.
Or New Year's Eve.
Was that, was that?
So, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I'm, I'm, I'm entertaining discussion about a second, not Christmas Eve.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, make, make them go.
But the answer to your question is, uh, that's already been posted. No meeting, Christmas Eve, no meeting, New Year's Eve. And the Monday of the first of the year is no meeting, but it's on Wednesday, the what, Wednesday, the-
Third, the second, second, sorry.
Wednesday, the second.
Wednesday's the thirty-first, and the next day is the holiday.
Okay, um, roll call vote to go into a non-public session for legal claims and compensation. Scott?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Art?
Yes, sir.
And Colas?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. We'll be going in the non-public. So, uh, Daryl, in the, uh, TV studio, you may finish recording our public session.
I can go upstairs if you want.
Merry Christmas and happy-